All right. Good evening, everybody. We're going to call to order the Tuesday, October 1st meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rivasio.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Please join me in the salute to the flag.
By the allegiance of the United States of America, to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you, everybody. We're going to have open time for a public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Members of the public will be given two minutes apiece. If you are with us in person and would like to make public comment for open time, please come on up to our podium. If you're with us via Zoom, please go ahead and raise your hand and we will bring you on as soon as we get through in-person public comment and we will start in-person with Patty.
Is the mic on?
Yes.
Okay. Patty Stoliar from Age Friendly Corder Madera. Here's something you probably didn't know. People with a more positive self-perception about aging have 7.5 years longer lifespan than those with the less positive perception. Next Wednesday, October 9th, is Ageism Awareness Day. Ageism is a form of discrimination and it involves stereotyping, prejudice, and mistreatment of people based on their age. Ageism refers to stereotypes, how we think, prejudice, how we feel, and discrimination, how we act toward others or ourselves based on age. Why should this matter to us? First of all, one quarter of our population in town is older adults and Marin is the fastest aging county in the state. Ageism negatively impacts our health and our well-being and financial security and the economy. When the discrimination leads to marginalization of a huge chunk of our population, these people are left isolated in their homes. A meta-analysis of 158 studies concluded that lonely people are 50% more likely to die prematurely than people with strong social relationships. That is indefensible. Aging is a goal for all of us, but we want it to be vibrant and filled with joy and purpose. Corder Madera Age Friendly Task Force was founded 10 years ago to fight ageism and to help build a town that supports and includes all age groups. We are especially proud to collaborate with the town for our trailblazing annual event, saluting all those 90 and older. And we also eagerly anticipate relaunching and expanding the intergenerational center that opened in 2018, providing a welcoming space to gather, to learn, and to play. How can you personally make a difference? Is there a neighbor who might need help putting together disaster preparedness supplies? You could help them assemble a go-bag, a stay box, and arrange for evacuation plans. Do you know a relative who lives alone that might love a visit from you? Or maybe you just want to kick back and settle in with a movie about aging. From "Good Luck to You, Leo Grand," about an older woman finally exploring her desires, to the beloved park ranger at our nearby Rosie the Riveter Museum, 103-year-old Betty Reed Soskin's documentary, "No Time to Waste." For many, many more movie film suggestions, go to moviesaboutaging.org and expand your mind and maybe your heart. Thank you.
Patty, thank you so much. We'll invite our next speaker up to the podium.
Dr. Bundy. Bob Bundy, Golden Highland Passage. I wanted to thank the town of Corder Madera, the citizens of Corder Madera, and DPW in particular for help with the last coastal cleanup. This has been put on for the last almost couple decades by the Corder Madera Community Foundation and the Corder Madera Lions Club. And the thing that we have observed is that we're picking up less trash, that the town is cleaner, the waterways and trails are cleaner. I attribute that to a couple of things. DPW has closed off some entrances to the wetlands where people were formerly able to drive out and dump stuff. That's not, no longer available. Cost Plus, Trader Joe's, is also monitoring their back parking lot with security and there are fewer items dumped back there and less to clean up. But I think it's also reflects the citizens of Corder Madera and those residents from wherever that use the trails for dog walking, hiking, or bike riding. They're being more careful. They're not leaving trash. And when I go out and walk just to enjoy the walk and pick up whatever I see out there, I see other people doing the same thing. We're, Corder Madera is in much better shape. It's much cleaner. The wetlands are shores, our trails are just something to treasure and to enjoy. Thank you.
Dr. Bundy, thanks so much. Do we have any other in-person public comment tonight? Yes, please come right up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janet Lorenzo and I've lived here on Temipias Drive for over, well over 20 years. And I'm here to comment on, about the intersection that runs from Chapman, Pixley, and Temipias, which has always been a bit dodgy. And recently there was apparently a cyclist who was hit on that intersection. And there was a lot of chatter on Nextdoor about it. And so I'm just sort of here making you aware of that I'm not the only person that's really concerned about this intersection, even though there's been some really good improvements. From the flag waving to the lights flashing, it's still really difficult for motorists. When they finally get a break from this larkspur to Corder Madera glut of cars, to turn the corner and see this straight shot to the freeway, it's like a horse to the barn and they just rip it. And there's nothing stopping them except even the flashing lights. I sort of don't stick to them because you see the flashing lights, but there's nobody there. So it's like pretty soon after a while, people don't care about the flashing lights. So there was a lot of talk and I said I'd come and just let you be aware of it and maybe there should be a look-see at this intersection. It seems to be difficult from both sides, both from coming down the hill, heading towards the freeway, and then coming back from two lanes down to one where, and it turned to Pixley and everybody wanting to go this way, that way, that way, this way. That's a really, really intense corner. So just to let you know what was going on at Nextdoor.
Thank you so much, Janet. Really appreciate it. Do we have any other folks with us in person tonight who would like to make public comment for open time? And I'm not seeing any. Lorena, do we have any hands up on Zoom for open time or any emails, public comments via email for open time?
No hands raised on Zoom and no emailed public comment for open time.
Okay, thank you. So we'll close open time and move on to our presentations. We have one presentation tonight, which is on Corder Madera's electric vehicle adoption progress. And I will turn it over to Pat Burdis. Thank you so much for being with us.
If I, if I may, Mayor Beckman, I just wanted to introduce Pat briefly. I had the opportunity to be at the August Climate Action Committee meeting. And Pat gave a brief presentation at that meeting about what you're about to see tonight. And I just thought it was not only an impressive, just concise presentation and information that I think our community should be aware of, but also I thought it was a great opportunity to have Pat come here in front of the council and show some of the great work that our Climate Action Committee is doing. Because I think this, what you're about to see also speaks to some of the advocacy work that our committee members and volunteers are actually doing out there in our community. So with that, I will hand it over to Pat, but thanks, Pat, for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it. Yeah, Pat Burdis, live on East Corder Madera Hillside, Chairman of the Climate Action Committee. I guess for those who aren't familiar with the Climate Action Committee, we are an advisory committee that's here primarily to support the council and the implementation of the Climate Action Plan. We also have a function as an outreach arm to the community to make them aware about what can be done. Actually, the word action is in the title of our committee. So the idea is not just education, but actually what can you do and what can the town do? We have a couple of priorities at the moment. One of them is to help spur EV adoption in Corder Madera. That's primarily being done through the placement of EV chargers throughout town in places that they might need to try to alleviate some of the range anxiety. We also have a separate outreach program going on about heat pump water heaters. And all of you should have received a postcard in the last four months about that. You'll be hearing more about that in the future. But that is actually, after transportation, interestingly, water heaters are the biggest source of emissions in Corder Madera for residential emissions. So it's an easy switch to go from a gas-powered water heater to, to a heat pump. Anyway, on the EVs, this is some analysis that I pulled together for our committee. And as Adam said, he saw it and thought it would be worth sharing with the council and anybody else who's watching. There's no magic here. I pulled this data off of the California Energy Commission website and then did some analysis on it. The highlights are, and of course, I don't have a monitor here, so I'm almost just about read that. So I'll do my best to remember. So we, the town adopted the same target that the county has adopted for EV adoption, which is 25% of light-duty vehicles by 2030. As of the end of 2023, EVs made up 11.6% of LDVs in Corder Madera. And I estimated it's about 13.1% as of June of this year. And I'll talk about how that estimate came about. And remarkably, in the first half of this year, it appears that EVs were almost 50% of all new car sales registered in Corder Madera, 49%, which is fantastic. And at this clip, it appears that we're on target to actually exceed the 25% goal by 2030. So overall, good news. There's definitely more we can do, but I just wanted to kind of share the headlines and then let's go with the details specifically. Just to comment here, as I said, all the data comes from that CEC site where they track new sales of EVs and the existing fleet. There are a couple quirks to the data, which I just in full disclosure need to make you aware of. The first one is, the main one is that they track EV and non-EV, so traditional internal combustion engine sales by county, but at the zip code level, which is what we're using for Corder Madera, they only track EV sales, not non-EV sales. So to estimate the percentage of EV over total, you need to make some assumption about how many other cars are being sold. So basically, I looked at the data for the county and for the state over a couple of years and used those averages and assumed that Corder Madera was essentially the same in terms of our replacement rate in order to arrive at that numbers. But as you'll see, it's supported by the data which we can validate. The other thing to mention is that the data is done by zip code. And technically, there are two zip codes in Corder Madera. Most of the population's in 9492. So that's the one that I, so, next slide, please. So yeah, so here is the progression of the installed base of EVs in Corder Madera as a percentage of total light-duty vehicles from 2018 to 2023. Those are actual registrations. And then for the first half of '24, we had new sales and I had an estimate of the installed base. So I think we're at about 13% as of June, which is great. So we're already halfway to the 2030 target, which is good news. Next slide. And here we've compared Corder Madera in the blue to Marin County as a whole in the red. And what you see is that, and this is actual registrations as of year-end, each of its years, Corder Madera has a higher percentage of EVs than Marin County as a whole. And actually, that gap has been increasing. So if you look in 2022, we were 1.8% higher than Marin and 2023, 2.3%. So we actually seem to be accelerating relative to Marin County adoption overall, again, which is good news. Next slide, please. So here is the, this is Marin County as a whole, a percentage of new car sales that were EVs, 40.5% in the first half. Really, really excellent. This is well above the national average, as you're probably aware. Not surprising, I suppose, given both relative income here and also general awareness about environmental issues. Very encouraging. And then next slide. And so here I have approximated Corder Madera relative to Marin County based on the data that I mentioned earlier. And again, so we went from 44% in full year 2023 to 49% in the first half. So really remarkable. And again, this, this kind of is corroborated by the fact that, as I showed earlier, the overall penetration of EVs in Marin County is higher than it is in, sorry, in Corder Madera, is higher than it is in Marin County. So this logically makes sense. So maybe it's 47, maybe it's 51, but it's right in that range of around half. So, which is superb. So I made a couple of, just, you know, 80/20 assumptions here, rather conservative, actually. Given that we seem to be close to 50% of new sales, I assumed that if we were only at 40% of new sales and just projected that forward, we would actually pass the 25% target in 2029. So at the current pace, we're actually ahead of target. So some good news on the environmental front, which you don't hear very often. And then the last slide, just to give you some context, I've added California here too. So as you can see, both Marin County and Corder Madera, well ahead of the overall California adoption rate. Nonetheless, 25% is still very good and is well ahead of most of the, so that's what I've pulled together. Happy to take any questions if there are any.
Pat, thank you so much. We'll start with questions from council members. Any questions?
I had a quick one. Did you do some research on the other communities at like a local level in Marin? So can you defer where trends in EV are better supported? Is it microeconomics? Is it housing type? Is it the commute and travel needs? Like, were you able to infer anything else from the larger data sets?
You know, I did take a glance at some of the town-level data a while ago, and it tended to follow sort of intuitively what you might expect, which is that the more affluent towns tended to have higher adoption rates. So there's clearly an economic component to this as well. I didn't go much deeper than that. I think the thing that we're trying to address, and I, as you're looking at it, answer is, what could we do in terms of chargers to make it easier for people? We're not going to do a better job than the car companies in telling people to buy EVs, but we can make it easier for both residents and people visiting to plug in. So yeah, I did cursory look, but I wouldn't say I went to any depth on it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a little question about, I've heard that manufacturers are starting to pull back on creating EVs. And have you seen or heard about any that trend actually coming to pass? And is it making it harder for people to actually find EVs?
I have not. I mean, I'm, again, I'm not an expert in the automotive market, but actually what I've seen is that more and more car companies are offering EVs, but the demand was somewhat repressed this year for a variety of reasons. But I think in general, there's a proliferation coming up. So, and actually, the costs overall have been going down. So I think in general, it's a trend in the right direction, though in recent quarters, we've had some kind of slowdown in adoption as a country, but not in Marin, apparently.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rosa, questions?
Just one quick comment. I just want to thank you for the presentation. And I appreciate the link you provided because I went into that website. And it even breaks it down by types of cars. And the, like, you know, not to mention any particular, but it broke it down so you can actually see which types of EVs people are buying. So it's a great website.
Yeah, the granularity of the data is really exceptional.
Yeah. So thank you for that.
And I have to come up with the crazy question at the end. So I have read from a fairly reliable source that because the batteries are such a huge and expensive part of the Tesla, for example, that once that battery is done after eight years, the whole car is virtually done and can't be refitted with a new battery, that there's going to be a lot of landfill coming up of these electric vehicles. And I'm just wondering, is that, is there any validity to that?
Again, I'm not, I'm not an expert on this topic, Pat, but I know there are a number of companies now focused on recycling of lithium batteries. So that's clearly on people's minds. We have a big wave of them coming through in probably five to eight years. There's going to be a lot of end-of-life batteries. There are a number of startups and now quite advanced companies that are looking to make a business out of recycling those.
It's good to hear.
I can guarantee you lithium will not be going in landfills. It's way too valuable for the energy.
But it's like a whole new thing that we have to deal with.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
Awesome. Pat, thank you so much again. Before we open this up for public comment, actually, I would like to add another kind of level to this discussion if we can. And I'd invite you as chairman of the Climate Action Committee and also staff to jump in. We're receiving an update about, very thoughtful update about Corder Madera's progress towards its goal of EV adoption. If we have a goal on EV adoption, that implies that the town is taking steps to achieve that goal. And Charles' question got to this, your answer got to this. But I was wondering if we could dive a little bit further into sort of what the town is doing, what the, what our climate action work plan and the committee and staff are tracking on in terms of strategies to actually boost EV adoption in Corder Madera. My, my kind of gut sense is that probably building chargers, easily accessible chargers is like the best thing we can do to incentivize people to buy EVs, make it easier for people to charge their EVs. So if we could get an update, maybe specifically with regards to the town's EV charger plan, which I know is, I believe nearing completion, if not complete, that would be really helpful just for added context.
I'm happy to just do a high-level overview. And then we have great folks here who have been working on this as well, who can jump in. But at a high level, we have, in this budget cycle, we have about $50,000 that we have programmed for infrastructure work related to locating new EV infrastructure in specific locations. We also have gone the step of actually identifying, I think, the priority locations of where those should go based on not only likely usage, but also costs associated with getting the electrical out there. The one thing that seems to be still challenging is figuring out the actual operational side of it and the vendor piece of who you go with, how you set it up, and ongoing maintenance as a result of, you know, there's a lot of things to think about with that as well. And it seems to be pretty fluid. I don't, maybe, maybe you could speak a little bit to the, Phoebe, to the overall environment in which at least those in the rest of the county are sort of think, how they're thinking about this, because I think that's also interesting, as you mentioned.
Yeah. So just to take it one step back in terms of what our EV strategy is, the Climate Action Work Plan for this year includes implementing the EV Acceleration Strategy Work Plan, which is, comes out of a countywide process that was created last year to develop this EV acceleration strategy. Our Climate Action Committee and staff then looked at that work plan and selected the actions that we wanted to implement here in Corder Madera. So one of the actions on that plan that's actually already been implemented is adopting the Green Building Reach Code that council adopted in July. And so those included measures to require EV infrastructure and readiness and new construction and renovations when it makes sense. So that's a measure that's helping people get ready to adopt an EV, even if they're not ready to have one now, that they have the infrastructure in their home, in their, whether it's multifamily, single-family, even commercial property, so that they're ready to have charging stations to enable that adoption into the future. Another strategy, as we've been talking about, is the public EV charging stations. And so we're, as Adam said, sort of at the point where we've done the site analysis. We know where, which town locations might be suitable. And in having conversations with other jurisdictions that have installed chargers, and there's challenges that they've faced. And so it's, at this point, sort of a matter of evaluating what the best path forward is, where it makes the most sense to spend town resources and time installing and managing stations versus considering other operational structures that might take some of the burden off of staff, because that would be a long-term commitment to those charging stations. So that's the update on public EV charging. And then another sort of arm of that, another priority that was identified in the Climate Action Work Plan is outreach side. So that's something that the committee has been working on. We were tabling out the line of car show. Marin County has also put a lot of effort into developing new EV tools, including an incentive finder and tools for researching and figuring out the cost savings for going EV. So those are some tools that we've been promoting as well.
Thanks so much. So I'd love to dig into some of those a little more. So when you mentioned that other jurisdictions have seen challenges around EV chargers that have been installed and managed by those jurisdictions, can you share some examples of what type of challenges we're talking about?
Yeah, primarily their maintenance challenges and challenges in getting the stations maintained by the companies who, you're required to have them come maintain the station. Otherwise, your warranty is voided. And a lot of, a lot of jurisdictions are having challenges with that and spending a lot of staff time trying to get in touch with those companies and have them come maintain the stations. And so then you have stations that are down for weeks at a time, and that's causing a lot of community frustration.
Interesting. I've actually seen public chargers, like at other municipalities, public buildings that have been down for weeks at a time. So I'm now realizing that's probably what I was seeing there. So thank you for sharing that. You also mentioned that there are sort of alternatives to the structure of having these chargers be built and managed by the jurisdiction. What would some of those alternative operational structures look like?
Yeah. So for example, the city of Sausalito has gone with a different model where they have partnered with integrative charging. And integrative charging, they're actually going to be sort of leasing parking spaces to this company and the company is going to be coming in and installing and managing those stations for them. So it is sort of no cost to Sausalito, from what I understand. And that company will be taking on all the maintenance responsibilities. And that's, there's a couple other cities that are pursuing that model as well. And there's also been some initial conversations about whether this, there could potentially be a countywide approach for this, so that it would be not so much every city trying to select a vendor and go through this process. So that's a conversation that's happening at the countywide level right now.
Very cool. Thank you. And then my last question is just, are you able to share any kind of conceptual timeline on when we think we might start seeing the first public chargers opening in Corder Madera? Because I know that a lot of our residents are eager for this to happen. A lot of residents are buying EVs as, as they should be, as we're glad to see them do, with the expectation that there's going to be public charging coming online here in the near future. And I think, you know, I think there's a budding feeling out there that, you know, hey, it's been, been a while where, you know, we've been talking about EVs in Corder Madera for a while. So I just was curious if there's any sort of conceptual timeline. I understand from what you just shared that there are still some unanswered questions. But are you able to give us any sense of timing on like even the first chargers opening? And I guess follow-up question, do we have a sense of a rate at which we would hope to be adding new chargers once we kind of answer these questions and are able to get the ball rolling?
Yeah, I think it's really going to depend on which pathway forward we decide is the best approach. So I know it's a priority. It's a priority for council, for staff, for our Climate Action Committee. So it's definitely one of staff's really priorities to move forward this year. I will say, in general, most people tend to, who purchase an EV, tend to charge it at home. That is the primary charging space. And so as we've seen, the lack of town-owned public stations so far is not inhibiting growth. But of course, there's populations who don't have access to charging at home, and that's what we really want to address with public stations. And there are public stations that are available that just aren't town-owned and operated right now. So there are still options, primarily at the shopping centers for those who need to charge outside of their home right now. But definitely something we aim to move forward.
Thank you. Looks like RJ wants to jump in.
Yeah, I can jump in. Couple thoughts here. So I mean, I'm not as familiar with the Sausalito model. I think Phoebe's doing the research on that. We're still evaluating. But in terms of kind of your conventional approach of, you know, funding the infrastructure and basically maintaining the infrastructure and setting your own rates and all those things, something we've learned and, you know, for many people to send a surprise, there's so much in the baseline infrastructure, establishing that new panel. And so it's not as if we're likely to fund one stall here and one stall there and one stall there. We're going to probably pick a priority location and roll out four or more at a time. The way the grants work also, it's per unit. So it actually, is it advantageous to have more? Because then, you know, your percentage that you pay out of pocket as a town is less. So, and then Phoebe can correct me if I'm wrong. I think we have the top three or two locations, you know, somewhere around Town Park, one of the two parking lots, or Minky. And I don't know if you've narrowed it down further, but.
Yeah, I think with the committee, we had discussed this Pixley Park site and then San Clemente Park as being some sort of top two locations.
Can I, can I ask another question?
You know, traditionally, these ones that I saw from TAM and stuff, that basically half the vendors fold and then they get, you're constantly updating apps and stuff, right? But outside of that, they were level one and level two chargers that would park all day. So you'd see them at the schools. But, you know, right now, at least commercially, the level three superchargers are really the way that you see people that aren't charging at home, recharging and quick charging, right? So I was wondering if that's one of the considerations you're looking at as you implement this plan, is what is best served for these people that maybe are in a hurry, don't have, you know, like, is a level three and is the infrastructure there? The other question I had is, is PG&E supportive? Is there incentives or do you have to pay from the source to bring that type of power and transformer to those locations, right? And if you, if you don't know the answer, haven't looked in it, you know, just consider it, so.
Yeah.
You want to take the first?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, on the fast charging, the town sites that we've evaluated don't currently have the electrical infrastructure to support fast charging. And the sort of populations we'd be looking at serving there are mainly multifamily and employees, workers. And so those are groups that would likely to be able to sit and charge for a couple of hours. So a level two charger might fit their needs there. It is possible, the DC fast charging stations are significantly more expensive and would require electrical upgrades, whereas the level two chargers could be installed within the existing capacity of those sites. It is possible, if we contracted with a third party that was covering the cost, that some of the sites might be appropriate for fast charging, but that would be sort of subject to their evaluation of the affordability of the sites.
Yeah, I mean, I think in other words, a lot of that's dependent on the existing PG&E infrastructure. Unless you want to bite off that additional cost to upgrade their side of things, they are limited on, on what's there. So, but yeah, you know, Phoebe's worked with some consultants to figure out, you know, what we can get with what we have on that infrastructure. And then I believe also TAM does provide rebates based on the level of charger. Is that correct?
And their existing program is more focused towards level two stations, but I think they would probably consider.
Yeah.
I want to thank staff for, for diving into this with us. I didn't mean to grill you, but, and I appreciate that you guys clearly recognize that this is a priority for the community. So thank you so much for, for the hard work you're doing on this. Going to open it back up for another round of questions from council members, because we just had sort of another level of discussion. And then we'll open all of this up for public comment. Any additional questions or comments from council members?
I, I'd like to just make a comment. One of the best instructors I ever attended at the Cal Cities was a city manager up in the Sierras who said, the trick is, when people need something and want something, to not do it, to find a private enterprise that's already wanting to do it and enable them to do it. So I think this is the perfect opportunity for a public-private partnership. I don't think our small town needs to take on the job of owning this infrastructure. I think we should just facilitate the market to develop it, my opinion.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions or comments? Fred, any other questions?
Yeah, so mine's kind of just a shared, SFO, I've had an electric car since 2012 and they provided free charging for employees. But with the recent overall adoption levels, even their robust infrastructure started not performing where we could charge at work four or five years ago. And it's to the point where they can't actually install the physical infrastructure enough at the places, and there's so much demand, they're bringing in power, rental power banks and basically plugging them in and recharging that night to basically then charge multiple. But the other thing is, is, you know, they try to set like four-hour limits on them and stuff like that. And, and, and basically, you know, the fast charging will have quicker turn. The problem is, is it's going to become so robust with individual level twos, there's, you, you'll give up too many spaces and too many cars are just parked there for the charging instead of the park or whatever other parking needs. So it's a balance too of cost versus the, the efficiency of basically truly moving people through that and how long they need to charge, right? So a lot of the chart, the fast chargers that I've seen are grocery store level stops, right? Thirty, forty minutes in, get your stuff and leave, right? So it's, it, it's trying to understand the full synergy and, and, you know, back in the day, they only supported level two. So it's only this new generation of EVs and it's part of the reason we see an uptick, I think, in adoption overall, is the fast charging brings it closer and closer to a pump-on-demand type experience that we had all become accustomed to. And so, you know, it's, I would just hope that we would look at that and consider that in the, in, in the valuation, but.
I just have one question about, you know, when people say they go to Target and they plug in their, their vehicle, they're, are they just sort of, you know, making, maintaining a charge or are they actually going there to fully charge? I'm just trying to get an idea of, you know, these charging stations, you know, do they need to be as robust as people are going to come park their car and fully charge it? I think, I, I just don't know. So I'm just wondering if there's any information on that.
Yeah, I don't have any data exactly, but I think it's a variety of reasons. There's some people who are just coming in convenience charging because the charging is available and they plug in while they're shopping. And there's some people who, that is their primary charging. I can say anecdotally, at, at Town Hall, we have these charging stations which are available to employees. And that has allowed employees to purchase EVs who didn't have charging at home at that time. So I think it's, it's both.
Okay, it's sort of thinking, you know, how, how expensive does it have to be? How robust does it have to be for the way it's really used? So I'm kind of interested in that percentage either way.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Can I get it? So is the question to make a more informed decision about how you want to support it? You want to see more data related on usage, right, as this, this plan moves forward?
I'd actually make any comment, like.
It's, it's just a question.
A little presentation on, on actually the electric vehicle purchases and whatnot. But I don't want to necessarily get into a direction on sort of a work plan item or what to consider necessarily. But I will say, you know, I think this discussion makes clear, it's not, I mean, we, when we went into this, I think we were hoping it was very straightforward. You, you know, you just develop the sites inventory and you go ahead and you just build them as quickly as possible. But it's a very ever-changing dynamic here of technological advances, people, how they use them. And then also the whole vendor side and operational side of it. And so I appreciate the team's sort of thoughtful approach rather than, you know, chasing it. We're, we are working on this, as you can tell, and just hopefully that helps quell some of the community's concerns that they're not seeing it. It's, we want to be thoughtful about where we're putting the town's money in this endeavor, so.
Thanks, Adam. Appreciate that. And I didn't mean to take us far afield here. I just felt like this was an important context. If we're talking about the town's progress in their goals towards EV adoption, we need to also understand what we're doing to make that progress, so.
We're happy to, you know, if we wanted to follow up.
Thanks so much. Looks like we have a comment from Fred and then I'll do public comment.
Just two quick questions. One is, just to clarify, for employees that drive in EV, we, are we charging them or we're not charging them, right? For, for our charging stations or are we?
I'm in, no.
Okay, okay. And then the other question is the town center, I think they put in charging stations that are Rivian. Are those specific to Rivian? And do you know if Rivian is paying town center like a leasing type fee or do you know?
I'm not familiar with their arrangement there. I believe some of them are reserved for Rivians and some of them are open to all.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So with that, we're going to open this up to public comment, both on, yeah, Pat, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one more comment.
Yes, sir.
So it's, we're talking obviously about the town deliberately putting in chargers, which is something we can do and control. There is, just to further complicate things, there's another big inhibitor, which is multi-tenant residential housing. So most people who have bought an EV are living, so all their own charger. One of the big problems is people who live in apartment buildings, either if there are chargers, there's usually like two or maybe one. And then somebody parks there all night and leaves their car and nobody else can use it, which is an inhibitor to people buying. And so we are looking into, we're trying to understand the issue basically, because it's, it's quite difficult when you get down to the landlord level and the tenant level. There's an agency problem in terms of who pays for the, who actually pays for the installation. Charger, in some cases, landlords are not able to pass that on to their tenants due to various regulations. So it's a very complicated issue and it, but it's critical to sort of opening up EV adoption to potentially a different socioeconomic community here in Corder Madera, because, you know, obviously if you don't live in your own house, it's, it's difficult to get reliable access to chargers. So, you know, having more chargers around town will help a little bit, but it doesn't solve the core problem of you come home from work, you want to plug your car in, especially if it's a level one. So it needs to be charged all night. So this is a much more complex problem, which is not easily solved and we are starting to, to look into it. So I just want to add that to mention to it as well.
Thanks so much, Pat. That's really helpful. So we're going to open this up for public comment now, both on the chairman's presentation on Corder Madera EV adoption and public comment on the, you know, questions and discussion we just had about what the town is doing to encourage EV adoption. If you're with us in person and you'd like to make public comment, please come on up to our podium. If you are joining us via Zoom, please go ahead and raise your hand and we will bring you online.
Charlie Kirschner, just some public comment about this. I am passionate about, passionate about this issue. And to Pat's point, actually, I'm a hybrid person, because I've salvaged Tesla batteries and had to use them for our projects, because those things are basically garbage after eight years. There's a whole environmental piece of it, but I came off of last council meeting, was very struck by the conversation around an electric street sweeper. And the cost difference of hundreds of thousands of dollars versus a gas one versus an electric one. But I do the raw math, and I had to do this for multi-tenant properties. I was managing apartment units, about 5,000 units across six cities. What we found was that anything above a level three was, I needed a commercial reason to have it. So whether it was a Tesla dealership nearby, I need to have the connection, because it's 50K per, per level three charger. But at a $5,000 cost for a level two charger, any place that we had that someone was going to be parked for more than three to four hours became the target we started going after, saying it's more cost-effective. But if I did the raw math and said, if there's a recommendation as a citizen about what we want to do around carbon reduction generally, because that's kind of the whole point, is how do we keep carbon reduction? How do we reduce the amount of gasoline consumed? We said, rather than focusing on an electric vehicle for the street sweeper and say, the, the mechanics aren't there yet from the last conversation we had, let's make an investment in what works best and transition up as the equipment's there, but have a couple hundred thousand dollars for grants for level two chargers in our businesses and public areas that someone might park for two to three hours. Two to three hours at a $5,000 level two charger will take care of a lot of people. If you put 30 or 40 of those chargers around our town, and in particular, if there was a subsidy for the town to cover that electricity in public areas, to encourage charging and encourage EVs, a more cost-effective way generally, to be deploying dollars meant for electrization, electrifying our grid and benefiting our citizens, I think it's a better deployment of money. And in particular, the point that Pat made, if there's public-private partnerships of grants to businesses who can put in level two chargers, they make money on those chargers when they're plugged in. That offsets their ability to pay for the electricity as well. I'd like to explore that more generally and encourage looking at level two chargers in particular, and particularly someone like me, who I've got a, a hybrid. Level two will get me there within an hour to be able to drive around the rest of the day through town. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Charlie. Any other in-person public comment tonight?
Well, Charlie stole my thunder with the question about the street sweeper, because I wondered what the upshot of that was.
Sure. And I just want to clarify that we're, we're just taking public comment on, on town light-duty EVs.
Okay, good. What I wanted to follow up what Pat said about apartment buildings, it's the same with condos, because especially I know where I was the property manager, there were not parking spaces next to the unit. You maybe had to walk up a whole hillside to get to it. So there's not necessarily a place where, when you come home, you can plug in, unless it's through your kitchen window. So something to consider. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other in-person public comment tonight? Not seeing any. Lorena, do we have any hands up on Zoom?
Yes, we do. We have a hand raised from Roy Wolford.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the presentation. Would it be very helpful to get into a lot more detail in depth on what it takes to get the whole EV program going, not just sales figure?
And that we're meeting a goal for, you know, some fuzzy, fuzzy. What are the affordability issues? What are the performance issues? What are the materials EVs are made out of?
Charles and RJ brought up great issues. Is the infrastructure there? And I remember there's been a number of EV discussions and asked about, well, what about the infrastructure for these larger buildings? And the, the conclusion was, the contractors were going to take care of it. That's, that's really silly. But what are the affordabilities? I, I've, I've seen some information that perhaps one-tenth of 1% of the wealthiest people in the world have purchased EVs. That leaves a lot of other people. So how are other people going to afford EVs? Insurance costs. My insurance went up 23% this year over last year. And I, I looked into, why is that? Well, there's a bunch of issues and it's just not one simple area. But the cost of repairs, the materials and the cost of repairs are getting very, very high. And EVs are at the high level of that. So how are we going to take care of the cost of repairs of EVs? On performance, how do EVs perform in the snow, in, in water and flooded rains and backwoods and away from the city and, and charging stations? You know, it's fine to push for high-density areas for EVs, but other areas, you got to come out and tell people what the real story is behind EVs. How, how many, how much tax is being paid by the EVs for highways, okay? Are EV owners going to pay their fair share? Is it going to be a registration fee every year of $1,000 to $8,000 a year per EV? The high, the whole carbon issue, carbon reduction, what are the hydrocarbons in EVs? The petrochemicals, the carbon fibers, the plastics? About 50% by volume EVs are hydrocarbons. And so the EVs aren't panaceas and we need to really take care of that, those situations. I would hope the next presentation includes these very important details of affordability, performance and materials and taking care of the infrastructure.
Thank you very much, Roy. Do we have any other hands up on Zoom or emailed public comments on this item?
No additional hands raised on Zoom or emailed public comment for this item.
Okay, okay. So we will close public comment. We've taken questions and comments from council, because this was a presentation. So I just want to thank Chairman Burdis again for the fantastic presentation. Glad to see that things are trending in the right direction. And I want to thank staff as well for humoring us on this deeper discussion. So thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks very much.
All right. With that, we're going to move on to item four on tonight's agenda, which is our consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Any member of the public or council may pull a consent calendar item for discussion. Would any members of the council like to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing none, if any members of the public would like to pull a consent calendar item for discussion, please come on up to our podium if you're with us in person or raise your hand if you're with us via Zoom. Not seeing anyone come to the podium here. Do we have any hands up on Zoom for the consent calendar?
No hands raised for the consent calendar or emailed comments for this either.
Great, thank you. So we'll bring the consent calendar back to the council for a motion.
I'll go and make the motion, move the consent calendar second.
Hey, Councilmember Cissé.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Our only public hearing tonight is item 5A, which is related to approving a tentative parcel map for condo conversion on Redwood Avenue, and I will turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. This evening, you'll be considering a tentative parcel map for condominium conversion at 115 and 117 Redwood Avenue. An approval of the application will not create an additional parcel, but rather it will allow for separate ownership of the two existing residences on the property. And the reason this application is being considered by the town council is because there is a conflict in the zoning ordinance. Next slide, sorry, Lorena. There is a conflict in Title 17 of the municipal code. One section places the authority of approving a map with the planning commission. And another section, which was adopted later, transfers that authority to the town council. This discrepancy has been flagged by staff and when the ordinance is amended, it will be, it'll be fixed at that time. So the planning commission did consider the application on September 10, and they adopted a resolution recommending that the town council adopt a resolution approving the map. and they adopted a resolution recommending that the town council adopt a resolution approving the map. Next slide. The project site is zoned R2, multiple dwellings, and it is developed with two existing standalone residences. Each residence is approximately 1,200 square feet. And there is also a two-carport that is shared by the existing residences on the site. Next slide. The project site is located at 115 and 117 Redwood Avenue. Access to the site is provided from Redwood Avenue. And the property is a flat L-shaped parcel that is approximately 6,000 square feet. All surrounding properties are also zoned R2. And single-family and multiple-family homes are located in all surrounding areas. Next slide. Now, this slide shows the two proposed units. 115 Redwood Avenue is proposed Unit 1. Again, this would include an approximately 1,200-square-foot building. And there's an additional area that includes landscaping and private area as well. 117 Redwood Avenue is proposed Unit 2. Again, also developed with an approximately 1,200-square-foot building. And there is private landscape and patios on this unit as well. And there is a common area that consists of a carport, walkways, and driveway. And this common area would be shared by both of the units. Next slide. Now, this map shows the proposed parcelization. The common area abuts the roadway, Redwood Avenue. And again, it includes the carport and the driveway, and then a walkway that provides access to Unit 2, which is in the back. And you can see the condominium boundary separates the two proposed units. And each unit does have outdoor private space. And the technical review of the tentative map was done by BKF Engineering. An execution of a parcel map will be required, and the parcel map along with CCNRs will be reported with the county. Next slide. The existing property is inconsistent with several development standards of the R2 zoning district, including site area for dwelling unit setbacks, lot coverage, and parking. At the time of construction, the project complied with many of these development standards, including site area for dwelling unit and parking. And the Board of Adjustments did approve a rear yard variance to reduce the required rear yard setback from 25 feet to five feet. An approval of the tentative map and execution of the parcel map will not result in the development standards being exacerbated. And these existing conditions are considered legal, non-conforming, and they cannot be the basis of disapproving the map. And the proposed map also does not create any new non-conformities. Next slide. This slide shows the required findings from the subdivision map act. And these findings must be made to deny a map. Staff does not believe that there is evidence in the record that supports any of these findings. And a discussion is included in the draft town council resolution, which is attachment 92 report. And staff recommends that the town council adopt Resolution Number 362024, approving tentative parcel map PL 220055 for condominium conversion at 115 and 117 Redwood Avenue. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is participating via Zoom and also available for questions.
Great. Martha, thank you so much for the thorough presentation. We'll take questions from council members. We'll start on my right.
Just one quick question. Once this gets filed with the county, the county will go ahead and reassess those two properties with respect to property taxes, fees, and all that kind of stuff?
I believe so. You know, they're not making any improvements. So it's hard to say what that reassessment would be, but.
Thanks.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions? Any questions?
I think you said it in the beginning, but so these were already condos, so we already got credit for two? Or is it a property that we're actually creating two units out of kind of one right now?
So it's a property that has two units, and it's owned by one owner. And this map will allow for each unit to be sold separately. So we're not creating any additional units for our arena, but it just allows for separate.
And it's freeing up more housing stocks to be owned by more people. So, okay, that's awesome. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. All right. We'll open this up for public comment. Any members of the public who'd like to comment, if you're with us in person, please come on up to the podium. If you're with us via Zoom, please raise your hand. Not seeing anyone come up to our podium here. Do we have any hands up on Zoom, Lorena?
No hands raised on Zoom and no emailed public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. We'll close public comment and bring this item back to council for discussion or a possible motion. Any thoughts?
I would move that we approve it as requested by staff.
Second.
Do I need to read the number approving? Adopt Resolution 36/2024, approving tentative parcel map application PL 22-0055 for condominium conversion at 115 and 117 Redwood Avenue. Second.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks again, Martha.
Thank you to the applicant.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our business items here. First business item is 6A, which is a review of the Shoreline Adaptation Plan Report. And we will discuss proposed next steps. Turn it over to staff when they're ready. I will also thank staff for flagging that conflicting provision in our Muni code and making a note of that to fix at the right time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pull the slides up. Need a sec, please?
Phoebe, could I ask you to put the microphone just a little closer?
Thank you for the reminder.
Phoebe, just FYI, your name tag is blank. Her name tags blank.
Oh.
Well, it's okay. We know who you are.
Maybe just one pull. That one's Amy's.
I got it.
All right. Lorena's on it.
All right. So in the meantime, for anyone that doesn't know, my name's Phoebe Golden, and I'm the town's climate coordinator and excited to be presenting tonight this final update on the Shoreline Adaptation Engagement effort and having this conversation about next steps. And so next slide, please, Lorena. And so agenda for this evening, we'll give an overview of the Shoreline Adaptation Engagement effort and the engagement that's been completed, review the feedback received from the community, and then talk about proposed next steps from staff. Slide. And this is the project team for the effort. We've had a really interdepartmental team of staff working on this project as well as excellent consultant support from plan to place. Next slide. These are the goals that we started off the effort with. We've really been focused on sharing information about flood risk with the community and as well as listening to resident and stakeholder input. And then with that feedback, developing a community vision to move forward together on shoreline adaptation. This is the engagement area that we've been focusing on for this effort. The outline is roughly aligned with the FEMA 100-year floodplain in this area of town. So it's a low-lying area that does experience flood impacts currently in some parts of it. And re-engaging with this area was also identified as a key next step in the 2021 Corder Madera Climate Adaptation Assessment. And I'll pass it to RJ to talk more about the town's previous work.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, so key point there that Phoebe just made, this is really an item that was listed as an action in our climate adaptation assessment. It was, you know, really to leverage some of the past work that we've done as a town. We have our townwide storm drainage plans. We've got, the county has done its own sea level rise vulnerability assessment. We've done some Marina Village levy study work and the adaptation assessment itself. Slide this. And really what we heard in that climate adaptation assessment work was that the town and town staff had to, you know, were asked to take a step back, re-engage, really kind of have those more intimate conversations. Even though we spent three years on the climate adaptation assessment, it did cover a lot of material in that three years. And I think it was at a time where people were less aware and educated of the various, you know, information out there, science, whatnot. And so this was a much better setting to really get down into some of the goals of these neighborhoods in particular and kind of, you know, how the town potentially could assist in that effort. So this was kicked off last fall. And originally, we anticipated to take us through spring, but it's been a very, you know, well-participated set of events. And so we're kind of in extra innings here, but that's okay. And we'll, you know, definitely try to tie a bow on it tonight. So next slide, please. So one of the first engagements was at our flood board last December. And, you know, we heard from our flood board members and a good number of participants showed up to provide comments there. We also, next slide, had several pop-up meetings, we call them. One really at the Marina Village Birm location, which is a facility that primarily protects the Marina Village neighborhood and parts of 101 San Clemente and also Marina Estates and some commercial areas. And then also a separate pop-up over on Mariner Cove on the same day and really trying to hear from those two sets of stakeholders, which really have different experiences in terms of flooding to date and also potential of sea level rise impacts moving forward. Next slide, please. This photo was taken at the marsh side. So, you know, at, you know, open tidal waters at the Marina Village Birm. It just goes to show that, you know, even on a sunny day, we had a 7.3 tide and we were, you know, very close to the top of our protection levels. So, you know, storm event, a, you know, all the winds and other, you know, wave run-up and other things that could happen would only exacerbate that further. And so it's definitely something that we view as a high priority in town. Next slide, please. So that same water elevation there, we actually had that lasered over, using a laser level to show that water height level at the adjacent cul-de-sac. So just kind of an awareness thing for people to know that, you know, that flood barrier is very important to, you know, their way of life and not just their neighborhoods there, but also, you know, really anyone who uses Highway 101 on a daily basis. It's acting as a protection measure for that facility as well. This is just a map showing kind of known elevations. You can see the legend on the bottom left. So the, you know, turquoise and yellows are the ones that are going to be the lowest. And as you get into, you know, kind of the earthier ones, we get into higher ground. So, you know, this is kind of showing what, if you didn't have that barrier, flood barrier protection, you know, what would the water do naturally? And that unfortunately is where it would go. So that's definitely something we want to get in front of and work toward and come up with some solutions for our town. We know that one of the low spots in particular, the one where I was measuring the water surface elevation, we had that surveyed at 8.3 feet elevation. Slide. We held individual workshop. Okay. We held individual workshops for those two areas in particular. So one from Marina Village and then separately one from Mariner Cove. We introduced a visualization tool, which used the Cosmos model produced by USGS. And they have a model that basically shows where the waters would go in various situations. And we were able to create a 3D rendering of those so that it was easier for our stakeholders to kind of understand. And, you know, some of the results were pretty significant, especially for the Marina Village Birm. It did show inundation on Highway 101. So, you know, again, bringing the importance to the forefront. And then we also had a similar event for Mariner Cove, where, you know, we do see and experience some inundation today. But, and that will continue over time, but probably not as dramatic as the, what we saw with the Marina Village side. Slide.
So as RJ mentioned, we started introducing this Shoreline Flood Explorer at the workshops. And this was another key engagement mechanism through this effort. And the goal was really to create, to share the vulnerabilities that we've been talking about at these events with a broader audience. So the video version of this is just six minutes. It's really short, brief, summarizes the vulnerabilities that these neighborhoods are facing. And then there was also an online interactive tool that was created, and that allows for some more in-depth exploration of the images and models that were created. So that has the 360 views that you can pan around and explore what it looks like besides what was shown in the video. And so this is, again, looking at combinations of king tides and storm surges as modeled by the USGS model and then projected onto 360 images of town. And this video, we really pushed it out ahead of the feedback form that was mailed out to all residents. So it was shared in our newsletter, social media, email blasts, really all of the outreach methods that we've been using throughout this effort. And it was also shared at the council meeting in May and the flood board meeting prior to that. So council is familiar with it. And we did ask folks to watch the video before taking the field feedback form, which was mailed out in June. And next slide, please. And so there were over 1,000 feedback forms mailed out to the engagement area, even though there's just 884 properties there. And that's because we mailed to both the property owner and the resident and owner, if they were different. The survey was open from June 15th to July 22nd, so five weeks. And we did a couple things to re-promote it during that period. We had the help of our energy groups to remind folks to take the survey. We put out A-frames in the communities as we've been doing for the events to remind people to take it. And also emailed business owners in the area that we had contacts for. And that yielded a total of 155 responses, which is about 18% of properties in the area. We did send different versions to Mariner Cove and Marina Village. As you'll see on the map there, the areas to the right of the orange dotted line received the Mariner Cove version and areas to the left received the Marina Village version. Next slide. This is what the survey looked like. It was a trifold mailer. So folks could just tear off that sheet with the responses and mail it back. It had a prepaid stamp, so we were trying to make it really easy for residents to return it. The other side also had a QR code if they wanted to scan it and take an online version instead. And we asked just five questions to keep it really short. We asked for their address in Corder Madera, just to make sure that we were, so we could verify they were only getting one response per address and that it was fair. And then we asked slightly different questions for Marina Village and Mariner Cove. So on the Marina Village side, we asked respondents to rate their level of concern about the potential failure or overtopping of the existing Marina Village flood birm. And on the Mariner Cove version, we asked about their level of concern about flooding in a severe storm event based on existing conditions. And then we asked a question about infrastructure support. And on the Marina Village side, do you support the town allocating funds to initiate a project to fortify and raise the existing Marina Village flood birm, which would include public outreach, preliminary design and engineering, and environmental review? On the Mariner Cove side, that same question was asking about initiating a flood barrier project along Golden Hind Passage and to also include public outreach, identification of priority areas, preliminary design and engineering, and environmental review. And then on both versions, we asked a question about support for supplemental flood mitigation strategies, including including home raising, improving storm drain infrastructure, preservation of the Corte Madera marsh. And then there was also a write-in for additional comments. Next slide, please. So these were the responses that we received from Mariner Cove. We had about 25% of properties in Mariner Cove responding to the survey. About 57% were very concerned about flooding in a severe storm event. 86% indicated support for the town allocating funds to initiate a flood barrier project along Golden Hind Passage. And there was also strong support for all of the supplementary flood mitigation measures that we asked about, and particularly improving storm drain infrastructure, which had a 91% support. This is looking at responses in Marina Village. And we did separate out the responses for this area a little bit more, just because it included not only Marina Village, but also some of the areas to the south of Paradise Drive that don't necessarily have experienced flooding or don't have the same awareness. So within Marina Village neighborhood itself, we had about a 19% response rate. And then the areas outside of that neighborhood had an 8% response rate. So that is why the overall response rate for this survey version was lower at 11%. And of the 52 responses, 50% were very concerned about the potential failure or overtopping of the existing flood berm. Nearly 85% support the town allocating funds to initiate a project to fortify and raise the flood berm. And similarly, there was strong support for all the supplementary measures, especially improving storm drain infrastructure. This, the responses that we got from the survey pretty closely echo what we heard throughout the engagement effort and feedback and comments at events. And so some of the themes that staff heard were that residents are already impacted by flooding. You can see some of the pictures here of flooding that's experienced in these neighborhoods. Residents are concerned about these impacts and the potential for increased vulnerability in the future. And staff did hear support for addressing these flooding issues, including through infrastructure projects that was asked about through the survey. When it comes to these infrastructure projects, residents expressed a desire to have a phased approach to any solutions and make sure that they're really customized to each neighborhood and the needs and vulnerabilities of each neighborhood and even more granular, specific areas of neighborhoods. We also heard some concerns about these infrastructure solutions, including where the funding would come from, how much it would cost. Some of the open-ended comments were, you know, encouraging us to look at grant funding that's available and possibilities to collaborate with other regional efforts. We also heard concerns about the potential for infrastructure to obstruct views or water access in these neighborhoods and the potential for impact on property values and also concerns about potential impacts on the marsh ecosystem. And with that, I'll turn it back to RJ.
Thanks. So, you know, after all this process for the last, I guess, 10 months, you know, this is really the takeaways when we take all the comments in and everything we've experienced, heard from the public. You know, there are, you know, two, and within the flood engagement area, you know, we've identified, you know, two projects that we'll get to. But really, the key priority is the Marina Village flood berm, given the scale at which the damage would occur if it did in fact fail. It's a much wider spread area. So, you know, that's, that's our recommendation is to initiate a project to fortify and raise this through, you know, more public outreach, preliminary design and engineering. And we'll get more to that. But the town was selected for a FEMA FMA grant. We just found out about a week ago, so that's really good news. And so we're, you know, definitely be pursuing that very closely to make sure we can secure those funds all the way through. But also implementing storm drain infrastructure per Storm drain master plan, we'll be presenting that as a next item, so more on that. And then some other strategies, you know, planning's been working and leading an effort to, you know, assist with the process of home raising, but also expand that to include looking out for potential funding through FEMA or other avenues. So that's, that's one thought there. And then, you know, not, you know, second, but not last, also start working on, you know, prioritizing and further developing, you know, what a project at Mariner Cove would look like. And, you know, work toward preliminary engineering, environmental constraints for that project. So more on that in a moment. And then also collaborating with the various regulatory agencies and also other, you know, public agencies, you know, such as even Caltrans and Marin County. And then also, like we said, the regulatory agencies, BCDC, Renaud-Bonds, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps and others. And always, always, always continue to pursue potential funding opportunities. So this is a map that kind of correlates with two of the kind of project concepts that have resonated as part of this project. So the dashed red line on the left side, that represents, you know, the flood barrier that protects Marina Village Birm, or sorry Marina Village and even Marina Estates and many of the commercial areas over by Paradise Drive and Amies and whatnot, and also Highway 101 and beyond, and even Town Center. And, and so even though there's kind of a more defined levee at the top or, or historic flood berm, there's also higher ground on people's backyards that also needs to be included in that scope. So we, you know, as Public Works, we view that as priority one in terms of where the town should put money and resources. And then luckily, we've found some outside funds. And then secondly, you know, the priority two here is over at Mariner Cove. And that's really twofold. It's, you know, working toward a possible flood barrier between Paradise Drive and somewhere just north of Eptide Passage, where we know the elevations are lowest and already are experiencing inundation on king tides. And that in tandem with some of the results we had from the Storm drain master plan and potentially investing in a new storm drain pump station there at Eptide Passage. We do have something that's was designed several years ago and could be worked in tandem with a project of that nature. And so, you know, and, you know, I want to say that this kind of takes a step back and is different from the climate adaptation assessment, which was really a long-range document. This is really, you know, kind of resonating what we think is something we should be pursuing here in the next 10 years so that it protects us for, say, 25 years. So it's not the berm around everything. It's, you know, what is, you know, it's kind of taking this prioritizing over time and also this phase approach and trying to come up with a recommendation based on that. So that's why you'll see the purple dash line does not do a full perimeter border around Mariner Cove. Next slide, please.
And just to start wrapping it up, we wanted to highlight some of the ongoing and in-progress actions that the town is already taking to address these flooding impacts. And one of these is the streamlined design review requirements that council adopted in July and are, have been effective as of August 16th. And these are already helping homeowners who want to raise their homes and no longer need to go through the design review process if they meet certain requirements. And staff have already had three applicants who have qualified to raise their homes through this streamlined process. And we're also continuing to coordinate regionally with other jurisdictions and agencies on these efforts. So staff participate in Baywave, which is a countywide collaborative group that meets monthly to share information and work on sea level rise topics. There's also the countywide sea level rise governance study that staff, as well as Mayor Beckman, will be participating in. We already covered the Storm drain master plan. That'll, that's also on the agenda this evening, that's moving forward. And then we also developed as part of this process, a collaborative flood mapping tool. And that will remain live through at least January of next year. And that's a way for residents to share feedback and information about where they're experiencing flooding impacts. And then, as RJ mentioned, the FEMA FMA grant will be following through with the selection procedures there to secure the word of those funds. And this is just a quick look at the flood mapping tool. It hasn't seen a whole lot of use yet, but we're planning to keep it live and send out reminders as there are king tides and storm events where people might be experiencing flooding and remind them to add their photos and experiences to this map.
So the, the exciting part here, as mentioned, staff had applied for a FEMA FMA grant back in, I think we first submitted end of December. And after, you know, nine, 10 months of yearly waiting, we did find out about a week ago that we were identified for further review, which means we were selected and the funds are there within the program. I mean, in my view, this is their way of saying we're selected, barring some inaccuracy in our application or some major overhaul in the federal government, you know, moving money around. But, you know, that aside, you know, I think, I think we, we heard a lot of positive support for our project. There was, you know, even at the CalOES and other levels and staffing levels of people that weren't reviewing the application, they just kept encouraging us to submit because it was, you know, a big lift in a short amount of time right there at the end of the year. And they really were the ones that encouraged us to kind of stick with it. And so this makes it all worth it. You know, we're able to bring $900,000 in federal funds to Town of Corte Madera and then also potentially about another 100,000 more. So our contribution there is 300,000, but we can use about 100 grand of that for our staff time. And so the out-of-pocket is more likely 200,000. So that's great news. We're going to take that as far as we can, but I think realistically, we've set aside, you know, a lot of, you know, public engagement. Getting through environmental compliance would be a big step, 60% plans. And then, you know, getting into the permitting with regulatory agencies and also starting to have some conversations regarding, you know, just right of way. You know, obviously, this project, part of it as it lies now is going to be in several people's backyards. But I think hopefully, community sees there's, there's definitely a mutual benefit here and we can work together to come to some, some great results. And with that, we will open it up for questions.
Great, thank you guys so much. Before we start with questions here, I just want to confirm, we're just providing questions and later comments on the outreach and the next steps, correct? Not on like specific conceptual projects at this time, is that right?
I mean, I would phrase it as, this is our conclusion of the shoreline engagement effort as we originally conceived it. It doesn't mean there might not be a phase two or something later on. But, you know, yeah, as part of, you know, your understanding and experience, you know, with us through this process, is there anything that you think would be helpful to tell staff that we should change, modify or omit?
Sure, and, and to the extent that I'm sure we've all got questions and comments and ideas on, for example, the Marina Village flood barrier, this is not, this is not the time for that. Is that, is that right?
I mean, I think, you know, I think we've, you know, I think this particular stage, we did identify what staff believes are the priorities. So, you know, good to hear whether, you know, council agrees or not and whether we've, you know, need to rethink something or reorder something.
That sounds like the next steps part. Awesome. Okay, thank you. So we're going to open this up for questions from council members. We'll start down here.
Thanks. On those two projects, have you done modeling to show that they will be effective?
We have not done modeling, but we know they'll be effective just given, well, I guess we've done, I'll put it this way, our Storm drain master plan did what create what we call a boundary condition. So it just assumed that tide waters will not pass through and then what happens on the interior. So it didn't so much say, oh, well, if we put a 10-foot, you know, if we raise it three feet or four feet, or it didn't get to that level, it just said water is not going to pass. What does it look like on the inside? So we've done that level of modeling. But with a lot of this, you know, we are talking about tides that are not what I would call high-velocity flows. The modeling was done by the Cosmos and USGS, who has a, you know, very complex model. So they're the ones that are establishing the water surface elevations that they think under the various scenarios. So we really applied their model to our own local topography in a way.
And then do you know if we would, if we'd go through with these projects, does FEMA give the town credit or do residents get any relief from an insurance standpoint?
I think there, there is a scenario where that might happen. I, it's too early to tell. I think, so right, residents that are in those zones that, you know, they have to play, pay flood insurance. But, you know, what we've seen from Foster City is they did allow neighborhoods to come out of that flood insurance area. But their elevation for the improvements was potentially much higher than what we would want as our community. So it's, it's going to be kind of a give and take discussion as we really dive into those projects. What the priority is, yeah.
Thanks. And I know we're staying away from details on projects. On the, on the survey, I think Phoebe, you did a great job trying to do outreach. It seemed like some of the responses were still somewhat low. I don't know if you have any feedback. And I go, I know you did a great job trying to do outreach because I know I saw the A-frames, QR codes. You guys sent mailers and everything. It just seems like they were still somewhat low.
I would say we were happy with the responses overall, sort of eight, around 18%. Not bad. But yeah, we did kind of exhaust all of our outreach mechanisms there, so we did.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just comment on that. I mean, we would have led to have 300 or more, you know, that would have been really nice. I mean, we did get 100, so that's, that's a good data point. But in terms of the town's efforts and their consultants' efforts to really try to put the word out there in every way possible, from mailing to, you know, social media, to putting actual signs out there, you know, we were constantly doing this, you know, throughout the project almost every month. Aside from going to every single door and knocking on the door, I don't, I don't know what else we could have done. So, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Did actually have some of our flood board members volunteer and go hand out flyers to the door.
And then just one last question. I know there's outreach to residents. Did you have any discussions with any of the businesses? And I'm looking at maybe like Nugget, I'm going to throw Aegis in there also because they would have us take it. And then Restoration Hardware with respect to, I want to say, their warehouses. Did, was there any outreach? I know there was outreach to them. Was there any discussion or any feedback from them or any of the businesses?
Thank you for that question. We did do outreach specifically to those businesses. They weren't as engaged as the residents in this process, but we have had other communications with them just about concerns related to flooding impacts and will continue to work with them on their individual circumstances.
All right, thanks.
Great, thank you Fred. Pat, any questions?
So my question is, first of all, thank you all for this work and for progress that has been made. Do we have really adequate, and for me, that means kind of top-notch design and engineering support? And would it be beneficial for us to go outside maybe to places that have dealt with a lot of sea level rise projects and find designers and engineers who can give us something that's highly functional and also aesthetically pleasing? We know that design costs are really a small percentage of the overall project cost. So I'm just wondering if a little extra step upfront here to bring in a designer would be a smart idea.
Yeah, I can answer that. So in particular, Yeah, I can answer that. So, um, in particular FEMA funds, if we're using those funds, they are going to have to follow the FEMA process. So they will have to do the whole RFP process. You know, I don't know that we have it in the budget, but you know, we, you could sell fund something in advance. You just wouldn't get any reimbursement. Um, but to your point, I do agree, and then that is part of our plan to, um, encourage our consultant teams to have a landscape architect, architect type, um, uh, person on the team that really can help with visualizing and renderings. Cause I think, you know, that's, that's really going to be, um, I, I think a very important factor, especially when we're talking about, you know, people's backyards and other things. So, um, that is part of the, the goal. So.
Okay. Thank you. One more, one more out of the box question. So, um, Buckminster Fuller always said, we should work with nature, not against her. So that would mean that Corder Madera, like Sausalito and like Greenbree and like Larkspur, could potentially consider some floating homes. Is that something that any of you have even talked about? And is there any opportunity to sort of explore those kinds of crazy big ideas that sometimes can happen?
So, yeah, I mean, as a reminder, we, we did focus, you know, kind of use this effort to, um, kind of look at a, um, a, a more immediate timeframe, right? So what do we need to do in the next 10 years, say, to, you know, put us in a good position for the next 25? Yeah. I think that idea is, would probably fall in the accommodation category. If you follow kind of the, the state's, um, kind of main guidance and, um, you know, based on what we see in terms of feasible options, what we've heard from the public and their own desires, um, that really didn't gain a lot of traction. Anything can happen in a hundred years. I don't know. But, um, yeah, at this time it was not, yeah.
Great. Thank you, Rosa. No questions, Charles.
So, you know, I've seen the whole process from the, the first, you know, adaptation program, everything. One question I had is did the granular kind of public outreach, this additional kind of mitigated phasing approach, really in getting public feedback, did that help with the grants with FEMA and letting FEMA feel comfortable that this is a really the right way to go and supporting it? Do you think?
I think just, um, you know, FEMA, uh, you know, I'm sure they've been on projects where they've, you know, funded things. And then before they've actually done the vetting and outreach of the public. So I think it's always good to show that, you know, we've been out there with our community. We've heard from them. They support us, this project. You're not going to waste FEMA dollars, um, you know, $900,000 of FEMA dollars and then never build something, right? So certainly that helps. Um, but also, you know, our whole team really just, um, you know, not just, I mean, we embrace the work and I think, you know, we all learn a lot about our vulnerabilities in different ways. And also even just visually being able to see it, what you thought you might know. And then really just pushing that out as far as we can, you know, regionally and just, you know, putting a flag in the ground saying, hey, you know, this isn't just about Cordera. Like, you know, 70 something thousand people drive on, you know, highway 101, you know, this is about all of us. And I think in some way, shape or form, you know, that did make it to a lot of the people that, um, you know, had some influence with the grant, you know, whether the one, we're the ones on the panel, I don't know. But, and this is just my opinion, you know, at least if they had it, they go, well, I've actually heard of the work they're doing out there. You know, maybe they didn't know all the specifics, but yeah, they are very active in Marin, in Cordera.
If, if I can add to that too, because I think one of the goals of this entire process, even going back to the climate adaptation assessment was to be out front and position the town of Cordera. I mean, FEMA is one thing, but we, there's a long ways to go if you want to actually build something. So there's going to be regional, uh, measures, perhaps passing, there's already funding being developed and, and sort of those resources. We want to show that we're ready to receive those, um, when the time comes. And this is the type of thing that you can, you can deliver, uh, and show how much work we've already put into this and, and really make the case that, uh, Cordera is deserving to be up the top of the list. We're not doing this, it's not a competitive, I mean, we all need to do our part throughout the county, throughout the whole entire Bay Area. But at the same time, there are going to be certain areas where it's going to be much more, you don't have this type of outreach, you don't have the type of community input to show that we can deliver this and it's going to get done. Not get hung up. Um, so I think just to add to that, it's beyond FEMA as well. It's, it's going forward.
And I like that precedent setting also sets a precedent to help others that maybe didn't have the resources to establish what to do in the beginning, but can emulate, right? Um, as we've seen with how, you know, uh, supportive housing and stuff, right? But so I, I did have.
Friend to get through. I will.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to comment it after?
There, I, I had another question. Um, uh, Bob Bundy was talking about going on nice walks, right? Will this be accessible and walkable? The, the berm that, uh, is from Marina Village?
So what we've heard about, you know, both potential flood barriers, um, around these neighborhoods is that the community is not super supportive of that, um, really because it impacts privacy. Now, there is a part that you could walk on now and, and maybe that part is fine because it's the existing condition. But, um, yeah, there was concerns about this idea that it would be open, an open path to people's backyards and.
Is it though? I mean, so the, I can understand with the one at Mariner Cove, I just Marina Village. I just wonder, is it really adjacent and touching people's backyards?
Yeah. Yeah. Many, um, many of the property lines actually do exceed, um, you know, the, you know, even past their back fence. So.
Okay. Well, so, you know, this, so my question to that though, is ultimately, you know, in other instances related to storm water management, if it's a publicly funded project that ultimately is benefiting those individuals, do those individuals really have the right to basically take away the use of public facilities?
Uh, can I, this will be explored through the space of the process in detail. And so I think we don't have design, we haven't.
Yeah, I, I find so that's the answer. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Adam. Looks like Fred had one last question.
Yeah, I just have a couple more. Um, do you know what the timing of the FEMA funds, what that timing is? I thought I saw some up there said six or nine months or something, but I couldn't.
Yeah, that's what we're hearing.
Okay. And then these projects, again, if we get FEMA funding, we're looking at like a year, two years from now, plus or minus, just rough idea.
So, uh, we, we can have three years maximum to get to the completion of this project, which is what we've defined it as, you know, roughly 60% environmental compliance, um, all those things. So that's from the date we get the official award letter, um, that we would get all the way through that. So, I mean, these are, this is a, you know, this project has it all. It's got the right of way challenges, the environmental challenges, the, you name it. So it will take, you know, likely the full three years.
Okay. And then one thing you just said, which I'm going to tag on to that one, regarding property lines, does that mean we're looking at easements, um, on some of these properties? Cause again, I don't know how far they come out.
Hey Fred, again, to Adam's point, we're not going to get into like conceptual projects, but the, all, any project that is proposed will go through the full public process, right? So we'll have ample, ample meetings as will the public to weigh in, um, and ask questions. Did you have another question that? Okay. Thank you. I don't have any questions either. Great presentation. Thank you guys. So we're going to open this up to public comment now. Um, any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, if you're with us in person, come on up to our podium. If you're with us via Zoom, please go ahead and raise your hand, um, or you can shoot us an email and we will bring you online here. And we'll start with Mr. Bell.
Thank you. David Bell, um, resident of Marina Village. Also for disclosure on the flood board, but my comments are from my resident. And this is, my comments are based on what was in the staff report on the engagement effort and not to get into design details or any out of the box concepts. Um, uh, kind of a frustrating, yeah, as mentioned before, um, this, uh, engagement effort was based on previous, the climate adaption, um, assessment that was severely opposed by, in my view, unfortunately opposed by residents of Marina Village and Marina, um, Mariner Cove. Cause it talked about barriers and really extreme planning. And, um, through my, uh, con, uh, connections with neighbors, neighbors actually hired a lawyer and they were going to sue you, they were going to sue the town if the, uh, climate adaption assessment was adopted. And, uh, so the town not buckled, but they adopted and came on, they put it into this plan. And the major concern was, the residents was they didn't feel they were engaged and they felt there was a lot of, uh, misinterpretation of data. So kudos for the town for going back, hiring staff, concerted effort, putting forth this effort, this engagement plan that is the subject of today's meeting. And I think you really nailed it. Um, as mentioned earlier, I was one of those, I knocked on my neighbor's doors. I was really frustrated. You complained about this, but now you don't want to answer a survey. So, uh, we did, everyone I think did our best to get as much feedback on this, uh, engagement strategy. So really thrilled about that. Um, so, uh, my second point is I just pointed out things in reading in the staff report. Uh, the pop-ups were a great success. They came and they knocked on neighbors residences that I think the town realized where there's a vulnerability in their backyards. Um, I see, uh, great, uh, concepts of the geolocival survey, virtual planet, shoreline flood explorer. Um, I really hope to input my photos into the towns of flood mapping. Really wished I would have taken advantage of the revised design regulations before I put forth mine. Um, bad on me. Just a reminder that the village berm, uh, around Marina Village across from like the highway patrol is already protecting. And I, I implore you to walk around there, especially at high tide. It's already protecting our shoreline free, uh, our infrastructure. And I want the town to replace the floods, the flood stage signs that were at the end of Echo. Because I think that could be a valuable insight to inform the public that that berm is already there and protecting.
Thank you very much, Dave. Going to have to ask you to wrap up. Thank you.
Support the engagement effort and, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. Really appreciate your comments. Any other in-person public comment here? Not seeing any, we'll go to Zoom. If we've got any hands up on Zoom, let's bring them on.
We have a hand raised from Roger Lyon.
Great.
Hi, um, I'd like to comment on, uh, the lack of participation. I think, well, let me first ask, why was, uh, the best, uh, choice from the Corps of Engineers that was done in 1996, why was that, uh, proposal not considered in this plan? And secondly, um, if you wanted, uh, there are no pictures of what this sheet metal piling is going to look like. But if people had seen the rendering of what this would look like in their backyard, a five foot high wall, they'd be blocking their view of the slough, they, you better believe that they would have turned out and been opposed to this plan. So, um, I'd like to hear a response on that.
Thank you very much. We'll come back to, uh, we'll ask staff to respond to any public comments once we finish taking all public comments. Do we have any other hands up, Lorena?
We do not have any additional hands raised for this item.
Okay. So seeing no further public comment, we will close public comment. Um, so I'll just ask staff if they can speak, uh, to those questions raised, um, specifically by the, the last speaker there.
Yeah. Um, so I think I mentioned it earlier, when there was a question about, you know, FEMA taxes and they realize we don't know, um, we don't know if, you know, we, we have to see all our options, see what funding we can get if we go this direction, what tax incentives we might go if we go this direction, what protection level we're going to get here, what the community wants. And all of that as part of this multi-year effort, likely three years, just to get to 60% is how we will get there. So we don't know what the type, you know, I don't know if it's a sheet pile wall. I don't know if it's a earthen berm. I don't know. And, and like I said, we don't, we don't know the height. So, um, and then in terms of the Army Corps comment, I'm not a hundred percent sure which one he's referring to, but I'm guessing it's one of the more long range concepts, whether it's the, you know, the tide, um, tide gate that crosses San Clemente Creek and, and shuts that off. But again, we were focused for this effort on what can we do? What is the best plan for the next 10 years really to set us up for the next 25? And so those are more long-term visions that, you know, we don't think we're, we're there yet. And the community, um, I think has, um, potentially more mixed reviews as we get into those conversations at this time.
Great. Thank you, RJ. So we will take, um, comments, uh, and discussion from council members now on our outreach, um, and next steps. And we'll start down here.
Well, so I guess, um, we're to provide direction, but it's, it, it, at least that's what it says. But it's, is, are we needing, or is it just kind of accepting? Because for me, I mean, it's a very comprehensive analysis of what we ask them to do with tangible backed by data solutions that seem pretty reasonable for the mid to longer term as far as what we should consider, right? And so.
So full steam ahead on the FEMA application to get that money in, right?
Yeah. I mean, I think the question is just do their next steps as outlined, look right to you.
Yes.
Yes. Excellent. Wonderful.
And consider design assistance, maybe. I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but it seems to be the best investment you can make in a project is to early on bring in people who have done it before and know what they're doing, just even if we have to pay a little out of pocket.
I think that there was design fees that they could, they are going to hire designers, right? As part of this FEMA grant about what it means, not just engineers.
Yeah. And then like I said, we would, um, put in the RFP to include, um, renderings and some landscape architecture, really to help visualize.
I think that'll help the neighbors who are concerned about the visual impacts a lot. If they know there's, you know, landscape thinking and design behind it.
Rosa.
I think that the effort to engage people was well done and monumental and you could not have done more. Why people don't answer surveys, which in general, in all surveys, people don't, there's a low level of participation. I really like doing surveys. I don't know, but some people just, I, they, you know, I'm just like, oh, how kind of you to ask. But, um, I don't think you could have done any more. And since there is opportunity still for people to engage with the website, that is still up. Yes. And that's still going to be, um, an opportunity to, to gain more insight. I think that there still is an ongoing opportunity for people and that stays open. So, um, I, my suggestion for, you know, or my position for next steps is of course to secure the funds and then we come back. And in that next phase, that might be a little more concrete, once we have money. People may engage more in more of the end product. So, um, well done.
Thank you, Rosa. Pat?
Just one little quick, you mentioned about leaving that, uh, website up for people to do the interactive flood mapping until January. I'd say like go to March or April, because sometimes the worst months are February and March. So if you're trying to get a rainy season under our belts to understand it, I'd leave it up longer than January.
Thank you, Fred.
Yeah, I agree with Rose. I think you just need to move forward with securing the funds. Um, I think you're going to have to figure out how to continue to do community engagement. Because if we don't get those funds for six to nine months, it's kind of like we, we have a wide gap where nobody hears anything for six to nine months. You kind of lose people after a while. So I don't know how you figure that part, part out. It almost seems like it would just drop off and then we pick it up again. Um, I would leave that up to you, but I think we need to continue to engage the community. Thanks.
Thank you. And I've just got, oh, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say, but I think that once it's announced in the IJ that we have. Well, I just want to say, but I think that once it's announced in the IJ that we have the funds, people will reengage.
Good point. I've just got a few thoughts to add myself. I know that our community development staff recently won a statewide award for their outreach for our housing element. And I think that our adaptation staff deserves an award for this outreach as well. This is really impressive, really impressive. It's, it feels to me like night and day from what we went through the last time we took a stab at this in 2021, where it felt like we had basically seven people who were engaging, not always in the most constructive way. And the other 99% of residents in these neighborhoods were just completely AWOL. And we certainly take responsibility for that. You know, I think we, you guys really taught us this time around what a successful engagement program looks like. So now as a policymaker, moving forward, knowing that we've got more than 100 residents who have responded and engaged in an area with only 500 homes, that feels to me like a really, like now I feel like we've got data, right? And we can actually make an informed decision and we know that we've got the community behind us. So that is incredibly helpful. And I just want to thank and recognize staff for that. And I feel that the responses that we received, I think, really validate the work that we did in 2021, which is so important. A lot of that work, I think, I think, I don't remember if it was Dave or someone else on public comment, you know, described some of that planning work as extreme. I think that's another thing that we learned in 2021 is I think we went too far, too fast. And I think this time around now, we have a much better basis, a much better foundation for moving forward at a pace that the community is comfortable with. So I just feel really good about where we're at. I feel confident in our ability to move forward here. 80% support from those surveyed for, for some kind of flood barrier, just understanding conceptually, hey, the neighborhood is sinking, the bay is rising, we got to do something. So it's, again, it's just great to have that foundation there. I think your next steps look spot on. So thank you. I really don't have any, any additional feedback there. I would agree, you know, I would love to see a way for us to, in our outreach about these projects as they develop, trying to include and play up public amenities if we can incorporate that into these projects. I think that's a great way to build community support and make this not a sad, scary thing that we're forced to do by challenging conditions, but something that actually, you know, provides maybe new recreation opportunities for the community or new ways for members of the public to get out there and enjoy this incredibly beautiful, vibrant, you know, bayfront ecosystem that's out there. So I realize we'll get into that, of course, down the road as projects come forward. But I just wanted to add that at a very high level. And I think the last thing I would say is just congrats again on the FEMA grant. That is huge. So great work to the team. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor Beckman. If I can, just real quick, you tied it very well together all around. And I don't want to, probably it was better to leave it on your last word here, but, but I do, I was going to pull us back and just recognize where we were back with the adaptation assessment. We couldn't even, you know, get the support to move ahead with considering options, you know? And so, and to David Bell's point, I think accurately, so thank you all for recognizing that. That was really what this was about was we said we were going to come back, take another crack at this. We heard about doing more engagement. And I also will say through this process, I think we learned a lot as well about how to approach this in a more tactful way, a more nuanced way than we did originally. And I think we're all in a better place for it. So I, thanks for the recognition. That's what this last eight months were about. And I would have to agree as well. I think we may be putting in applications for outreach, public outreach awards next year at some new conference. I don't know if it's planning or climate adaptation or what, but I think we certainly can go around and show other people in the Bay Area how to do really effective community engagement around this issue.
Absolutely. And last, I just want to also recognize our flood control board, who were so helpful throughout this process, including by volunteering and getting out there and mobilizing the neighbors. So thank you so much to you guys and your colleagues for, for your support, the supportive role that you played in this process.
I really want to second that as well, too. Thank you.
All right. So with that, we're going to conclude item 6A here and move on to item 6B. And this is consideration and possible adoption of a resolution approving the storm drain master plan.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Beckman, members of the board. I'm going to load up a PowerPoint presentation with me. All right. So this is a follow-up to the last presentation where we presented the draft storm drain master plan back in August. So I'm going to move through these, you know, I shortened the presentation to kind of hit more of the highlights since you've already seen a lot of this once. But basically the, the goal here for the plan was to identify financial needs, prioritize projects for, you know, conditions such as pipe condition and also conveyance, meaning kind of the overall amount of water that can flow through these facilities, prepare a 10-year plan and update our electronic data. Here's just a quick bullet summary of, of, you know, the approach to this overall process. Obviously a lot of technical work, a lot of field work, a lot of desktop work. And that's all really in the report and appendices. So we'll have that on file with the town for many years to come. These are just some of the examples of what was collected in terms of data. So, you know, field investigations, we did drone surveys of our retention basins or lagoons, closed circuit television of various storm pipes, site-specific investigations. We established some tide gauge surveys, which are just identifying the elevations of some known features in town that we can come back to in time and kind of use as observation points as tides may change. And then an update to the settlement survey. So a lot of work was done in this in prior storm drain master plans. And, you know, it's a very big part of many of our low-lying neighborhoods, the impacts of settlement. And so we've updated the information so that is current. This is just an example of the drone that was flown over the various lagoons and kind of some of the information that it was able to produce. In addition, you know, at a very micro level, these are, you know, elevation data points that are also pulled from that same information. So as you can see, highly detailed and was able to use that for our flood modeling. We looked at, we did some analysis on corrosion evaluation, you know, many of our pump stations and facilities have, you know, parts that are, you know, have potential for corrosion due to the elements, you know, salinity and other things that we want to get on top of. So that was all, you know, part of the analysis. And then here's that updated settlement data analysis that I mentioned. And it, the prior studies, you know, it was considered useful information to a lot of people as part of that effort back then. I think the last one was 2008, but it shows, you know, projects settlement to date and then estimated settlement moving forward. And so we've updated that information. And so you can see even on some of the northern and northern eastern parts of Mariner Cove, where we have likely 100 feet of bay mud, there still is upwards of 2.1 feet of settlement still to occur. So just adding that to the overall conversation in terms of what we're calling relative sea level rise, even if, you know, water surface elevation stone increase, we still have a relative drop over time to be considering. Here's a quick summary of our pipe conditions. So good news I would say from this is that only 7% of our system is corrugated metal pipe, which is typically the ones that are, you know, in the worst shape because that was kind of the pipe material that was used back in the original vintage. And they're now most often kind of corroded and deteriorated. So, but I guess the, the bad side is about half of the 7% is going to need to be repaired or replaced in the near term. But overall, good, good information and good, you know, fairly good results on our pipe condition. Here's a summary of, you know, what we're calling very high priority, or yeah, very high priority projects. I won't go into all of these, but the document really, you know, it goes into pump station needs. It goes into, you know, storm drain pipe needs. And then it has these individual projects that are kind of specific to various components of our overall flood control infrastructure. But those are various ones that, you know, I can touch on if needed. Here's the summary of our budget needs for our pump stations. So really every pump station in town has something that needs to be upgraded. It could be, you know, on the smaller scale. And granted, this is, you know, what it would take to get the pump stations up to a state of good repair. So, you know, it, I want to kind of put that in context because it could be alarming to see all that. At the same time, you know, if we did, when we do the same thing on roadways, we're going to find that, you know, aside from roads that we've paved in the last five years, they're all going to come on the list with something that needs to get brought up to a higher standard. So, but yeah, some vary from replacing a pump to, you know, a MCC that, you know, controls the system to gates to whatnot. But nonetheless, they did a thorough, comprehensive analysis and came up with a budget number for each of them and also prioritized them. So all the information that I just shared was previously shared to council. And I think really what I recall as one of the directions that were given was to provide more information on the budgetary side of things. And so we've, we've spent some time doing that and I'll get to that. I'll get, eventually get to a kind of draft five-year capital budget that we can kind of take a look at and, and discuss. But sticking for now to the flood control specific needs. So Schaff and Wheeler identified what they call very high projects, $29.5 million over 10 years, which, you know, obviously is a lot of money for any agency. They did say that, you know, one way to reduce that expenditure would be to slightly defer San Clemente Pump Station, which is, would be their next recommendation if we were to defer something. And even that, I want to have a discussion. I mean, I think we could still put fun, you know, the way I have it in here is still having the funds to proceed with a lot of the design work and any environmental compliance, but potentially deferring the, the construction costs till outside of the 10-year timeframe. So we'll get to that. The one pump station that is the most important at this time for rehabilitation is Shorebird Pump Station. So that one, we really, you know, should keep in our 10-year plan. And then these other items are, you know, the, the pipes that are, you know, the whole bottoms rotted out and these other priority projects that are ways to optimize our overall system. So as mentioned, you know, we can get closer to a $2 million per year on average by removing the bulk of the construction of the San Clemente Pump Station. That gets us to a $20 million over 10 years rather than the 29.5 over 10 years. And we'll get more into that. In general, I would say we've been spending about 1.5 a year thus far on various projects. And so this is, I guess it's, or sorry, about 1 million each year. So we are about doubling kind of the past five or six year spending levels. So here's, and apologies if it's a little small in text, but this is kind of that five-year draft analysis of the potential budget based on what we've heard from council and the community as our commitments. Also factoring in all the master plans and those priorities that were identified there. And then really trying to show kind of where we stand across all of our projects and start kind of, I don't know that, I guess I'm going to phrase it, you know, we're here to kind of introduce this more than to solve it tonight. But just showing that, you know, you know, what would a path forward look like for potentially the next five years? So this is a five-year look ahead. Keep in mind, so you've got the purple box, which and ignore the last one, which is not a flood control related topic, but it is a regulatory topic, the large trash capture. The four line items in blue be where they do add up to $2.5 million on average over a five-year term. And we're recommending that based on the more urgent needs, we think, based on the master plan. But that, excuse me, sorry for that, on the backend, the second five years, it would balance out potentially closer to $1.5 million in funds. So basically what we saw in the master plan is we have, you know, significant needs that can't wait. And so we're kind of front-loading some of those costs, but over 10 years, they'll balance out to about a $2 million on average based on this current draft. So this is, yeah, moving forward with Shorebird Marsh Pump Station, which was the number one pump station priority. Some of these priority projects, urgent pump station repairs. And then seeing how those funding levels fit in with the town's overall funding. And Adam can speak more to this, or perhaps Daria, about just overall revenues that we kind of see on a given year. And it's right around this 5.68 million dollar amount for capital and programs and everything else. So, and I'll come back to that side, but that's the end of the presentation and open for questions, comments.
Thank you. Do you want to jump in, Adam?
Yeah, just, well, just on the funding side, I mean, and again, I think RJ mentioned it. This is like a living, a real-time document that is meant to be an introduction. Generally, we're going to work through this on a year-by-year basis through the processes. We essentially did this last year. We have, we have mid-year budget revision process that actually there was in the consent calendar summary where we ended up last year at 23, 24. So we'll, we'll come back, go to the finance committee, come back in like January to talk about our, our mid-year budget revisions at one time. Additional monies and where, where we want to put those monies. We'll get back to the council with that in January. And we have our strategic planning discussion about how our five-year revenue stream is going to match essentially the CIP. High level, I'll just say right here, what doubling the storm drain and flood control spending will necessitate is some more difficult decisions around how to prioritize funding elsewhere. So we currently have and are projected to have about 5.5 to 5.6 million dollars in sales tax override, our sales tax measure, local funds coming in. That's 5.5, sorry, 5.5 to 5.6 includes the sales tax override, sales tax measure, as well as some of the recurring revenue that we get at those structures as well. And so you're, you, you start to see that just in these CIP projects, it, it includes, it would basically equal this amount. But we also use the sales tax measure for other funding, seniors and youth, disaster preparedness, park and rec staff funding as well. So I think it's just showing, wanted to show right now, just there are constraints on the horizon that we're going to need to discuss by going this extra, doubling the funding recommendations. This does not, the funding I just mentioned does not include one-time funding that we could in the past have put to, for, for example, in the mid-year budget process. in the mid-year budget process into a town capital project fund, which is how we helped to build town hall. I mean, year over year, put in, starting to sock away some funding. Essentially surpluses that we had given here into those sorts of things, knowing we would need it. So I will just say that's how to read this. Again, as RJ mentioned, intent isn't to tackle this right now, but I think it was responsive and a good, to a good comment from council member Casilla at the last meeting to start to plan for these costs in a overall long, you know, a little bit longer term horizon. So you start to have those decisions lining up through our processes each year.
Just one small thing to add there. Somewhat unrelated, but just to clarify some, some info about this spreadsheet. So we have a line at the very third from the bottom, grant funds. So you know, we consciously put the overall price tag of these projects to show, I think, a bit of the scale of the work that's going on. But then we inserted the grant funds there in that line item. So, you know, in year one, 670,000, year two, 2.3 million, year three, 400. To get back to, I think, what is the question that is most helpful is how much money do we have to play with, if any, you know, in terms of discretionary projects beyond this? So just a clarification on, on kind of, you know, so for instance, you know, the, the big one in particular Paradise Drive Complete Streets is shown as, and it's likely trending toward 2026 and we've got $2 million. So, you know, I just want that to be known. If someone sees this or the public goes, oh, well, let's just skip that project. Well, we would only save ourselves $500,000 in local funds, not the whole grant amount. So.
Great. Okay. Thank you, RJ. Thank you, Adam. Obviously, as you guys said, we're here tonight to adopt a master plan. This, we're not here to budget. This is not a budget hearing. But thank you for providing this, this conceptual budgetary information in response to Fred's thoughtful question. So we will start with council member questions on this item and we'll start with Fred. Okay. We'll start with Charles.
So from this master plan report outside of just a budget, what I'm curious about is, you know, I think some of the pump stations and stuff, we talked about like maintenance waste cost spending, right? Like, like the short sighted kind of builds that happened in the past that we've had to make up for in the last couple of years. Maybe we would have to continue to do that. But with this kind of CIP funding, right? I guess one of the, one of the ways I like to think about spending our money is are we spending money upfront to do it right? To then save money that would have been shorter bleed, you know, bleed out money that basically wasn't really building infrastructure for the future, right? And so that's as far as priorities and it's, it's the balance of like, you know, what does it mean that they're deficient? How much is that costing us already? And how much are we going to have to throw more money at it, independent of what we do and sacrifice in other places? That still would be spent otherwise, right? I think that'll help people make decisions about really what's being sacrificed, because it isn't just this is monies out of nowhere. It's monies that otherwise would be more wastefully spent, I think. And so I don't know if you're able to identify that though. I mean, that's just my kind of wish that it would be that easy, right?
Yeah, obviously, you know, when you're in, you know, the heat of the winter season and a pump goes down, you're going to replace it. But nonetheless, having more information, you know, maybe there's a deficiency in the way the wet well is interacting or, you know, some of the electronic components are driving the pump to where they're actually not getting their intended service life. And so if we can also pick those up at the same time as doing a pump, new pump now, it's going to last longer, stuff like that.
Yeah. So that, that got, I'm glad you see it as that way too, is, is it's the synergies of doing the work and understanding where to pay. But there's also, I know you've presented with the sewer master plan, right? And the, the kind of the programs now that you have understanding the entirety of the underground infrastructure and the alignment to street upgrades and other infrastructural kind of projects. Do you see that any of these will align and we can also then synergize and align them in the next five to 10 years to create better cost synergies for the town as well?
Yeah. I mean, there's always a direct relationship between pipelines in particular, whether they're storm drain or sanitary sewer and roadways. And neither are cheap. They are big investments and we have them on just about every road in town and including pavement. So since that, added information increases the overall efficiency that we can make decisions and inform the council on decisions for the various products to tackle and really start to map this out, right? It's, you know, we might have, you know, an old report that says, you know, Golden Heim Storm Drain is in bad shape, but, you know, we, we don't know that it's, you know, a larger segment and oh, and while we're out there, we're right next to this other problem. And actually we won't fix this problem unless we also fix the sag over there. And so it's really just having a more complete picture of, of everything that's going on.
That's great. So in some ways, even though it is a large capital project, this, this master plan also helped kind of give you all the data that you would need to actually save dollars in keeping the system maintained or even improving it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, this, this really carries over into even the climate adaptation work and, you know, even like I said, the paving work and our everyday maintenance.
Thanks. That was an awesome question to get to ask. Thanks.
Thanks, Charles Rosa. We'll come back to that. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Any questions?
And just a quick question, I think. So we've gotten really used to getting these wonderful retail sales tax revenues that kind of keep everything going. But if we have a recession again, like we did in 2008, are we able to kind of put the brakes on temporarily or should we have reserves ready to go in the event that? Because it's pretty predictable that we won't always be able to rely on these funds.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, you know, definitely we've got 1.8 million dollars in what we're calling urgent. And so those are ones we want to tackle here in the next two years. Would it be also great to fix every pipe that's corrugated, that's, you know, corroded at the bottom of the next two years? Yeah. But, you know, at the same time, you know, we got to prioritize and do all those things. And even things like the big investment on the pump, on Shorebird Pumps, Marsh Pump Station. If times get tough, worst thing, you know, it stretches a year or we value engineer and maybe it's a phase one project here in the first five, 10 years. And then knowing that we got to come back for some second phase. So we're always going to consider the, the funds available, the climate we're in, and just try to get the most value no matter what. So.
So you just have to promise to never leave.
And I will say, what I referred to about the 5.5, 5.6 million in crane revenue does not include a $2.5 million reserve for an emergency situation that if our revenues were down, we needed to take care of something, we could also have for that.
Thank you, Fred.
Yeah, you may mention this already, but what's your biggest concern on the projects like the OMG type thing, like we really should be doing this like now?
I mean, I know we, you know, if you walked into this conversation for the first time today, you know, it would come off as alarming. But I mean, actually overall the feedback we heard from Schaff and Wheeler is that we're, you know, we're in pretty decent shape. I, you know, wouldn't say great, but like, you know, average or slightly above average is what I took compared to, you know, a lot of agencies around us. I mean, the reality is so many agencies were built, you know, in the middle of the century in the Bay Area, and it's just coming due for all of those old facilities. So this is not unique to Corder Madera. You know, I, I don't, there isn't one that, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying there aren't important projects and ones that we need to address, but you know, there isn't one that's like keeping me up at night on the specific to the storm drain master plan. So.
Okay. Thanks. And I think that's a great answer because if you set their same one, I'd say they're saying, we need to go do it now. But if you're not losing, I mean, if you're not losing sleep, it's a good thing. Thanks.
Thank you. And I have no questions. So we will open the storm drain master plan up to public comment. Any members of the public who'd like to comment, please come on up to our podium. If you'd like to comment via Zoom, please go ahead and raise your hand and we will be doing three minutes a person. Dr. Bundy.
Bob Bundy, Flood Board. Really, I, I think RJ did a great job of getting really competent consultants in to look at this. And I think in response to Charles' question, my interpretation is that while they looked at what needed to be replaced, they also looked at what has changed in the infrastructure system, particularly the High Canal Pump Station, which was put in in the nineties, whereas some of the pump infrastructure was put in in the fifties and sixties. And is, doesn't need to be as robust as it did back then. It's the High Canal Pump Station is really what has protected Madera Gardens in particular. And also the San Clemente Pump Station, that whole drainage goes through the San Clemente Pump Station. So that's changed the, the way San Clemente Creek used to drain through the culvert underneath Paradise. And so they're really also being able to look at, you know, some small pump stations here and there that may not be need to be replaced or can be much smaller than before. So I think we really got some good consultants on that and they did a deep dive and looked at what's really going to be needed for storm drain protection going forward.
Thank you, sir. Any other in-person public comment? Not seeing any, so we will take any public comments via Zoom.
We don't have any hands raised on Zoom and we didn't receive any email public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. So seeing no further public comment, we will close public comment and bring this item back to council for discussion and a possible motion. Who'd like to start us off? Any thoughts?
Good job.
Good job. I, I, I think the addition of these, you know, five and 10 year numbers is really helpful as we plan in general about spending in the town. So I really appreciate that addition. It's a great document.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional thoughts down here?
No, I can support it also. I think you did a great job and I agree with Bob. I think the consultants you brought in is totally detailed work. It was understanding when you start seeing film of like pipes they went into. So I think it was, it's very thorough. Everything that they went through. So I think that helps set up, you know, planning forward for the next 10 years. I do worry a little bit about the cost just escalating over time that everything else does. But we're going to have to deal with that when we get to that point. Thanks.
Yeah. Great work to the team. Really solid master plan. Obviously we can't answer all the funding questions tonight, but at least we have that solid factual basis that we need to understand what work needs to be done. So thank you.
So I'd like to move that we adopt resolution number 37 dash 2024 approving the storm drain master plan of July 2024. Second.
Hey, Councilmember Casilla.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rivasio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item seven, council reports, and we'll start with the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor Beckman, council members. I do have a couple of reports. First off, I do, yes, a couple of us or a few of us were down at the American Planning Association. Saturday, I think it was Sunday evening, planners do not, I guess, not encouraged to take time off during the week. So Sunday evening, we did receive a statewide award for our public outreach related to the housing element. And it was really quite a production. They do 2,100 planners from throughout the state or attendance. And so just to be acknowledged along with all the other great work that's being done throughout the state of California. Get our name out there. It was, it was, it was nice. It was recognized. And I even touted our, I threw in a couple of, I touted our new town hall as well. That was just recently accomplished as in my few, we got a couple of minutes to do a couple of remarks. Woo, you know. What am I trying to say? Secondly, I also importantly, I was hoping, I've mentioning this in my reports last couple of times, I was hoping I would be here able to discuss with the council a comprehensive proposal for the age friendly intergenerational center. You know, it, it, I think a lot of work went into it by a lot of, of not only staff, but certainly our advocates for this intergenerational center. A lot of people wanting to do this. And I really tried to bring all the pieces together. So we had a full understanding that I could bring something into the council to really understand costs, structure, programming, all the different facets of it. And as you know, we were looking at a property on the Meadow Creek Drive. Before coming here though, I really wanted to pull back and reassess and have a conversation with our program leaders who would actually be important individuals to make this actually happen and work and just have the conversation about, do we feel like this is the right place? Is this going to work at the location? And there were some concerns still about some of the stipulations that were being put on us from the landlord and concerns about parking and occupancy generally that gave us pause. So I'm calling it a pause right now. You know, nothing is for certain. I don't think we're out, there's no one racing to take over and occupy that. But it's a pause and reassess sort of what our alternatives are. And so I just, I tried to communicate that as widely as I could to all the stakeholders who've been in the conversation and now to you as well. So you're aware of where we are. And we'll take it from here. It's still obviously a priority. And so I want to continue that effort. One other thing, just a small thing, but I did want to highlight that we are going to be working with the chamber to highlight Old Corder Madera Square merchants with the Marin Visitors Bureau. It's a small thing, but I think it's an important step that the town can step up and help the chamber with an initiative to essentially highlight those businesses and importantly also events that occur in Old Corder Madera Square. They get 90,000 hits every month on their website for tourism. So it's a small effort that we can, I think it's something like $500 to advertise certain merchants around Corder Madera Square on the pet from Marin Visitors Bureau. So I think that's well, well worth it. Quickly on 240 Tamil Vista Boulevard, I just quick update. I think the last public update we, we gave was that we had requested interpretation by HCD regarding whether or not a, the particular property at 240 Tamil Vista Boulevard was in, within one half mile of the major transit stop. That was sort of the foundation on which that project was proposed. HCD declined to comment on that. So right now I'll just say the developer is reevaluating and considering options at this point. Ongoing interaction with staff. So there's nothing to report, but I know we had talked about potentially having a community meeting to discuss process and just the facts of the project, given that it's up in the air right now a little bit. I think it's premature to do that. And so we're just and then finally, unfortunately, we had some actually some vandalism in our new bathroom at Town Park with some graffiti inside several of the restrooms. Things happen. I think it was reported about approximately $4,000 in damage. The good thing is our cameras that we had purchased to sort of deter some of this actually has led to some arrests of some juveniles who were responsible for vandalism at the restroom. And it was forwarded to juvenile probation for charges. So just, just, you know, these things happen. We're going to have the same sort of issues at new skate park and pickleball facilities as well. And so we're considering how we similarly deter those events. And certainly the security device that we invested in was helpful in this case.
Question for that. So.
Question for that. So if it is that they're charged and found guilty, will they be able to recompensate the parks and rec to fix the restroom? Like, is there is there a mechanism for that, Amy? Accountability to the actual damage done?
Amy Ackerman, town attorney. You know, it'll go before, you know, probation officers will, it'll go before the court. If a petition's stained, and even if that's informal probation, the court and the probation department have discretion to figure out what kind of remedies. It is difficult with juveniles because they don't technically have money. So it can go back to the family, but I think there might be some compensation or some remediation, like maybe they have to help clean it up.
Is that something where the town can actually make a statement during their hearing with a?
Juvenile hearings are generally closed, but an interested party can. I think the town could send a letter, you know, saying it was a brand new facility, it was damaged and, you know, we like the youth to understand the impact to the town.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Adam. Great report. We'll go to council member reports now. We'll start with Fred.
You, I'll just rattle through these. 9:18, I attended the Corder Madera Age Friendly Meeting. 9:19, it was Marin Wildfire Prevention Agency, sorry. 9:20, it was the Guiding Coalition. That's with the Larkspur Corder Madera School District. We have another meeting on, it's an all day meeting on the 8th. One thing I liked about that, what they did is they actually broke us into groups that we're going to stick with through this whole project. That group, the one I'm in, and most of them includes two parents, either kids that have gone through school, Neil Cummins or Redwood, or they have kids in there now. Two parents, one faculty member from the school district. And then what I like is it also includes each group, one student from Redwood and one from Neil from Hall Middle School. So I think it's the way it's designed, it's designed really well. Also attended on 9:25 MCC MC meeting. On 9:27, I attended the Spirit of Marin Awards, which honored business leaders throughout Marin, including Paige from Marin Luxury Group. And Eli was at that event also. Little hot and a little bit sweaty because you're sitting out in the sun with a very little shade, but it was a good event. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Charles.
I attended the Chamber of Commerce today. One of the things they brought up was what Adam mentioned, but another one is, is Amy has been working with them to better engage our local businesses. And I think what was nice was to explain she's a community development officer, right? Like, and and that's much different than just a building and planning personnel and and you could really see and hear how the relationship has changed in that expectation. And so that was probably one of the nicer things I I got as a takeaway from that. You know, some upcoming events that are really popular in October that we're going to see is they have the candidates forum coming up, but they also have the golf tournament, which is always well attended. And I think hopefully Adam Wolf and others, they were hoping some town officials could join. I don't know, Eli, if you play golf, but.
I do not.
All right. So so I think you should reach out to them as they did want town participation. So yeah. And, you know, I think that they had some discussions that they want to bring forward to the council that Adam is aware of and would be able, you know, after talking might have, because with the intergenerational center, there was also talk about having a temporary facility there for the for the Chamber of Commerce. And that also is waylaid now, so they may need alternative solutions. So they kind of, if you, you know, keep yours out, but they're not a, you know, it's a kind of nonprofit, right? The TOT tax is a little bit lower than they had expected. So that's also a concern. But one of the nice things is the hotel said that the Scotty Lab Foundation workers are all staying at our local Marin Suites. And I don't know if you all knew, but our local hotels like to package for workers that are doing infrastructural projects or other types of, you know, events or whatever, special deals to make sure that they all stay here. So if you ever have wind of that, you know, they're they're a great resource to be able to keep it local. So just want to show this. That's it.
Very cool. Thank you, Rosa.
I didn't write down the date, but it was two weeks ago. I attended the NRJ timely topics and the guest was Mark Brown from the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, focusing on homeowner insurance and keeping insurance companies engaged in California in the conversation. And really focusing on giving the insurance companies information about the efforts to expand defensible space and hopefully get mitigation credits for areas that take part in that.
Excellent. Thank you, Pat.
Okay, first, first and most importantly, Oktoberfest is this Saturday. If you are on staff and you want to attend, please check with me. I get to issue the comp tickets this year. So also, if you're volunteering, as Eli and his brother are to either work the Gator Pour, you can get in for the whole free event. And this is the Corder Madera Lions stepping up again. This was the second year in a row that there was a desire to stop this festival and reinvent it. And we decided to try to reinvent it on the fly. So it's not just Oktoberfest. There's going to be a super cool photo booth where you can take a picture that looks like you are actually in Germany in the Bavarian Mountains. We're going to have a costume contest overseen by outgoing councilman and beloved former mayor Charles Lee, who is going to.
I've been doing a lot of research on.
Where is Leader Hosen? Yes, we are. We're going to crown a king and a queen and of them if we need to. But also there will be a cake walk with real nothing bunt cake prizes. There is a new butcher in town in the old square called Zonda from Argentina, and he is going to be grilling up his favorite cuts of meat, including some tri-tip sandwiches. You, nobody wants me to stop now, huh? We are doing a pie baking contest. You are invited to bring a pie by by 2:00 PM. We do know that Pig in a Pickle is making two pies, hoping that he's the only two pies because he doesn't think anybody will want to compete against him. But we would love for more people to bring in a pie. And you will be, if you are the winner, you will be named Corder Madera's Baker of the Year because nobody else is competing for that right now. We're going to have some great professional face painters for the kids, an actual magician, this really hot young magician who's going to do three shows. Lots of fun for the kids. And if you buy your tickets by Friday, you'll get $10 off. And of course, if you're staff, you or anybody who wants to attend. Oh, I'm not supposed to say that. Okay. And then if I, if I can just comment on a couple of other things that were really important and the whole idea of the Meadow Creek thing, one of the people on the age, age friendly council said, it was like we were trying to put the wrong Cinderella's shoe on the wrong sister's foot. That we just don't have the welcoming feeling from a landlord there. So I think there are other buildings and I will get back to work on seeing if I can find something there. And then the other thing is also that was brought up, the Redwood Pool is going to be closed for reconditioning. And so we're going to have an issue there. But then again, if the Best Western Pool is still available or the Marin Suites Pool, maybe there's someone in town who we can negotiate with to at least keep the seniors, you know, keep them with their pool program or or something. So I guess that's going to happen next year. I think that's it. See you all at Oktoberfest, I hope.
All right. Well, I'm already hungry, so that was not very helpful.
My report is quick. On September 19th, I attended an MCE board meeting. On September 23rd, I was on the Southern Marin Chambers of Commerce Cruise Mixer, which was super fun on the Angel Island Ferry. On September 24th, I attended a Central Marin Sanitation Agency meeting. On September 25th, I attended an MCC MC meeting in Santa Fel. And on September 27th, I sweated it out with Fred at Spirit of Marin and it was a good time. And that is my report. So with that.
Mayor Beckman, can I provide one update of interest?
Absolutely.
Just want to mention that, you know, or, you know, there was a accident that we're aware of here on Tamil Pius and Public Works has already been working with Parametrics, which is the Parisi Group to consider dropping the speed limit of Tamil Pius Drive as well as several other roads in town. So we hope to bring that to you likely in November.
Great. Thank you. And that speaks to a public comment that we received earlier tonight as well. So thank you. With that, are there any comments on the draft agenda for the October 15th council meeting?
Not for the October 15th, but the first meeting in November. I'd like to see you come back to us with the intergenerational center. You mentioned there may be alternatives. I just don't like the word pause. When I heard the word pause, I think the thing, I don't want to see it fall off the deep end. So and again, if you could come back maybe with Tim, programming, whatever alternatives you guys can come up with, even if we can't find space at that point, point of time. I just don't want it to drop off. Thanks. That'd be at the first meeting in November.
Yeah, I mean, I'll share my perspective. Obviously, we're talking about the October 15th meeting, but I'll just share my perspective that I'm not comfortable with us necessarily dictating specific meetings to staff because I don't know what the draft November meeting looks like. I don't know how much time Adam feels that he needs to be able to bring something to us for a fruitful discussion. So I would, I would like to get input from staff on timing on that item. But thank you, Fred. Your comments are noted. With that, we're going to adjourn the council meeting.